Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the May 23rd, 2024 Special Meeting of the CalOptima Board of Directors Finance and Audit Committee to order. I would like to ask Blair Contrada to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please establish form?
Here. Director Contrada, here. Director Corwin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. A couple of housekeeping items before we get started. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio recorded and streamed live on CalOptima's website. For the record, all members of the Finance Audit Committee are in attendance in person at CalOptima Health's offices, and no members are participating remotely. As a result, we will not need to conduct roll call votes. For those wishing to make a public comment online, please submit your name and affiliation via the webinar Q and A button prior to the beginning of public comments. If your comment is related to a specific agenda item, please include the agenda item in your request, and you will have the opportunity to make your public comment after staff introduces the item. To make a public comment online, you must register and be signed on via the provided Zoom webinar link and have your computer's microphone enabled or use telephone audio. When the clerk announces your name, your microphone will be unmuted, and you will have three minutes to address the committee through the chair. Unregistered users and users listening on the phone will not be able to make a public comment online but can make public comments in person. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, Madam Chair. Staff would like to hear Agenda Item 7, Mas Adams, 2024 Finance and Audit Planning prior to the report's discussion item.
Okay, thank you. So we, let's start with the Chief Financial Officer Report from our CFO Nancy Wong.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Chair Basara and the members of FAC. My name is Nancy Hong. I'm a Chief Financial Officer of CalOptima Health. I have two verbal updates for today's meeting. First one is the highlights from Governor's May Budget Revision for Fiscal Year 2425, and the second one is related to some year-end reconciliation items. So I would like to start with the May revise. Governor released his May revision on May 10th with an estimated state budget deficit of $27.6 billion. This deficit amount is after the state took $17.3 billion early actions in April. The May revision proposed $8.2 billion in additional budget solutions. I would like to highlight a few key items from the proposal that will impact medical program. That includes reduced funding for equity and practice transformation EPT payment to medical providers, eliminate provider target rate increase phase two that was originally scheduled for 1-1-2025. The plan was to make additional investment in primary care, specialist, hospital outpatient ER, and other services, but that program got eliminated in next year's budget. But on some positive sides from May revise, it had, May revise had maintained the funding from, for TRI Phase 1. That was the provider rate increase became effective January of this year, 1-1-24. CalOptima had included TRI Phase 1 in our fiscal year 25 operating budget. In addition to TRI Phase 1, the state budget also had no change to the full scope medical expansion for income-eligible adults aged 26 to 49 regardless of their immigration status. Moreover, they had included the funding to continue the support of call lane implementations. In terms of the next steps, the legislature will start their budget hearing with the goal of passing the budget bill by June 15th of this year. So that's my quick update on the state budget. Moving on to CalOptima's year-end reconciliations. While we're approaching the end of fiscal year 24, I would like to give your board a brief update on a few reconciliations that staff will be performing before close the year. Based on the updated information that we received from DACS, the department had made revisions to their managed care contract. The COVID-19 risk corridor provision had been removed and replaced by population acuity adjustments from, for raiding period after January of 2021. So as a result of this change, staff are currently performing the reconciliation, including, number one, release the COVID-19 risk corridor accrue from fiscal year 21 through 23, and also, on the flip side, set up a new estimate to account for the acuity, the population acuity adjustment starting calendar year 23. We don't have the final number in terms of the net impact, but I wanted to take the opportunity to provide your board with a heads up with this upcoming reconciliations. We're planning to complete all the calculation in June closing. So that concludes my CFO update, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
The, the adjustment you mentioned on the acuity will not have any impact on the budget we're considering today.
So the, the acuity adjustment is going back to prior period time. So at this time, there's no impact to the future budget we're proposing today.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we will hear a cybersecurity update.
Good afternoon, members of the FAC. Chair Basara. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of CalOptima Health Cybersecurity Program. My name is James Steele. I am the Senior Director of Information Security for CalOptima Health. I'm pleased to report, if we can jump to the next slide. Perfect. I'm pleased to report that we had, we had no major cybersecurity incidents in the past three months. However, we did receive notification from Change Healthcare about their breach, and I will be discussing that in a few slides coming up. I also want to walk through a few projects that we have in flight as well as the quarter one cybersecurity metrics. First, however, we'll look at some cybersecurity news. This news is intended for the management and the board to understand the cyber risk in healthcare and make informed decisions on where we need to keep our focus. Annually, we, we see a couple industry reports that focus on cybersecurity breaches. These report indicators are likely what we will be seeing over the next several months. So they point in that future direction. The first report is the Verizon Data Breach Investigation Report, and the second is the Baker Halstetter Report. Baker is a law firm that specializes in cybersecurity breaches. As summarized here by the HIPAA Journal, "The industry trends show a significant increase in breaches with insiders being the major cause." This does not mean malicious intent by the insiders. Rather, more talks about the cyber hygiene of the users and the network. It's critical for us to stay ahead of the trends with proactive measures. Our cybersecurity awareness training is the best method for that, to keep ahead of those trends. Are there any questions about the cybersecurity news?
Just curious, is this, is the healthcare field across the spectrum of industries high, medium, low in terms of, of negative activity?
It is high.
Because?
Because healthcare is a prime target for a lot of PHI. The records from healthcare on the, on the black market go for a higher value. So they have more value to attackers because of all the data that's involved in those healthcare records. So they're looking at that as a higher target. And traditionally, healthcare has been behind the, the ball on having cybersecurity programs in place and equipment in place, technology to prevent breaches.
Do you think the industry's catching up or not?
Slowly, the industry is catching up. A lot of the recent breaches that we've seen really point to the impact that a cybersecurity incident can have in the healthcare. So a lot of the industry in cyber, in healthcare is starting to really put a lot more emphasis in cybersecurity measures, but overall, it's not there. We have an overlap with cybersecurity in healthcare and cybersecurity in public agencies. So in both of those sectors, there's typically behind this, behind the trends. CalOptima is in a unique position where we have a lot of support from both our Board of Directors as well as the senior management that allows us to make sure that we, we are pushing forward and driving awareness and cleanliness in our cybersecurity program.
And those two sectors you mentioned are behind because of cost and bureaucracy, if I can shorthand it that way?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Change Healthcare. I'm sure you're aware that on the 21st of February, Change Healthcare took down their systems as a result of the ransomware data breach event. What you might not be aware of is that Change Healthcare was actually compromised on February 12th, meaning that the attackers were in the Change Healthcare system for nine days before they launched the ransomware attack. During this time, the attackers moved laterally through their network and exfiltrated four to six terabytes of data. That's a lot of data. The impact to this event was very broad, possibly involving a third of all Americans. The cause was around cyber hygiene, which included leaked credentials and a configuration issue on a system. This matches closely to what the breach reports showed as the, the cause for cybersecurity events. Upon notification about the event, CalOptima Health stood up our incident response team and executed the incident response playbook. Then we worked with the business teams to put into place workarounds for all impacted areas. And you can see over to the right, some of the impacted areas that we had. Down at the bottom, I've, I've referenced the sources of where I've got this information. One is the house.gov, an investigation or a interview that they did with Change Healthcare as well as cybersecurity mag, Weekly, Security Weekly, which is a cybersecurity website that tracks all of this type of news.
Yeah, James, can I ask, given that 70% of the data breaches are, it's coming from insiders, is that intentional or, or not intentional?
Not intentional.
Okay.
So it is using the same password for your network, your CalOptima work, or essentially your, your work email or your work login as some other, like, social media or some other associated, like, personal place that may have been breached. It is utilizing weak passwords, not changing those passwords when they are compromised. And then the other side of that is configuration setting. So the IT department's setting up configuration on a system that is facing the internet where there's misconfigurations, something that allows those breaches to come in without checking to validate that the controls are in place to take care of that.
Thank you.
The impacted services, I assume, came with a cost. Is that correct? I'm sorry, why can't I look at you just?
Yes, Dr. Corwin, yeah. Yoon Young Kim, Chief Operating Officer. Yes, we had six areas that were impacted where CalOptima Health was using Change Healthcare Services. These all had to go into either manual workarounds. I think you've heard some updates about, for example, all of our check printing is now being done in-house. We have staff who are spending additional hours making that happen. We've had a lot of remittance advices for our providers who are getting their claims. We had some workarounds on creating those in-house and sending those out to providers. We are at this time tracking all of the additional costs related to this. Everything from additional equipment that we have had to procure to do these, to staff time necessary to make sure that our providers do not feel the impact or we minimize the impact to our providers. And again, we are collecting all that cost information and reporting that as well.
And is that in anticipation of a claim against Change Healthcare?
I know that it is in anticipation of potentially a claim for our cybersecurity insurance as well as, again, if there are additional avenues for us to make ourselves whole, we would pursue those.
Thanks.
So takeaways from the Change Healthcare. First, our cybersecurity team didn't, we didn't look at this as just an event that took place, but something that we can always use to, to improve our security posture. There are, there are highlights, focal points here with Change. Also told us to highlight those same focal points in our organization and look at that. So multi-factor authentication, access control, automated password reviews, and of course, the security awareness training. Operationally, we're ensuring that we have business continuity playbooks in place to handle outages for major vendors and looking at any avenue that we can to ensure that, that we are in, in the best possible position from a operational perspective as well as a cybersecurity perspective. Any more questions before I move on to the next slide?
Don't see any.
Our next topic is the projects in flight. And our first topic is our risk assessment and penetration test. CalOptima Health contracted with a third-party vendor on this assessment, and we planned a completion date at the end of April. We are complete with that, and we are, we have moved into the final reports, and we just received the final reports this last week. This assessment was very comprehensive, including multiple penetration tests, HIPAA risk assessments, firewall reviews, incident response tabletops. And at the incident response tabletop was at all different levels of the organization, from the staff all the way to the executive team were involved in that tabletop. We've reviewed the preliminary reports and now the final reports, and we're actually very pleased with the results. I have a high-level set of information and findings that we'll review at our next meeting. However, if the board would like to go into more detail, we can do that in a closed session due to the sensitivity of the penetration test data. And yes, we do have findings. It's not a valid test if they, if they didn't find something for us to improve on. So we do have findings, and the remediation for anything that we felt needed to be started early, started during the middle of the, once those findings became available to us, we started the remediation. All of the other findings are start, have, have already been brought into a work plan, and we're starting to plan out all of that remediation work to ensure that we close out those findings. Are there any questions on the risk assessments?
So just to confirm, the findings that were found were addressed immediately, and we're not waiting for the final reports?
The critical findings that were found, the ones that, that we felt or that the risk assessment team felt were at the most risk, those were addressed, they were brought up the second they were identified by the risk team. And then from there, we started the remediation work on those. Other findings that were not as critical were held, and we just received that listing of those findings. They didn't feel that there was any, any need to bring those, elevate those up before the, the final reports.
Right, thank you.
CalOptima Health's next two projects are interconnected. They're both around the SIM or Security Information and Vet Management, and this will enhance our monitoring and response. The SIM correlates all of the logs and alerts from the other platforms, allowing the automated response actions to happen out of one platform. As mentioned during the previous FAC meetings, the SIM is the heart of our cybersecurity team, and it allows us to investigate and respond to events by correlating logs and alerts in one single dashboard. The hardware was upgraded along with the license. This project is complete, and the hardware is in operation. The second item is the SIM, is for the SIM as well as for the 24x7 monitoring. That is still in process with a planned completion at the end of May. Are there any questions about the projects that we have here? Okay. Here we review the Q4 metrics. This is October 2023 through December 2023. Actually, that's wrong. This is January 2023 till, until March of 2023. We do have the ones, the findings for April and May, but they're not in here, but they're not much different. This has been a relatively quiet quarter. Our third-party, despite the over, the year-over-year increase in the industry, our third-party breaches for this month or this quarter was not, not large. However, it did include that Change Healthcare item. We did repeat, report a few data loss prevention issues to privacy, but nothing out of the normal. The tools that we're seeing here show that the events and actions were quickly remediated. So we have three metrics that are looking at, at how well we put together our sec, security, some of our security tools. So really looking at not, not things that we need to fix, but what the scope of cybersecurity is. We have in the last, in that first quarter, 3.7 million emails coming in, and 56% of them are malicious. That's not just things that are annoying to receive. That's actually malicious content, either phishing attempts or malicious files that are trying to come in. When we look at what people are actually clicking on, we see 1,700 over that quarter phishing websites that people have gone to. That means that they, they either got that through an email that made it through the system or more likely, they went to a website and from that website, they clicked on a link that tried to push them to someplace that was looking to fish their credentials. And our tools blocked 1,700 of those in the first quarter. And then there were 10 unique malicious files. Could have been on multiple people, but there were 10 unique files that our tools blocked that would have caused a cyber event if they were allowed into the system. Along with that, we have our assets in, in the lower piece of that, and that those assets show that we've got a large scope, a large footprint for attackers to come in on of what they're trying to, to, to attack. And that is what we're trying to defend on the other side of it. Remember, with Change Healthcare, it was one system that wasn't properly configured, and that's all the attackers need. Which, this is what we're trying to defend, is to make sure that we've got all of these systems. All of them have the proper controls and patching on them.
Is the 56% malicious content kind of a standard in the insurance industry or in healthcare or across all users, including people at home?
That is across all users, all business users. So it's the people at home, that depends on, on what they've got. Some of their ISPs take care of that for them. But that's across business users.
Is, how does our 56 compare?
That, that, we're about standard for that.
We're about standard, okay.
Can we assume that the decrease from the fourth quarter of last year to this quarter is based on the tools that we have in place?
I apologize. That's, and that was brought up to me yesterday when I was reviewing this by Yoo Young. That's a four-quarter number, and my asterisk at the bottom is wrong. That should be from Q2 of '23 through Q4 of '23. So that was those four quarters all the way through, kind of like cumulative, or sorry, through Q1 of '24. That was those four quarters all cumulative.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So we're a little lower percentage-wise?
We are a little lower percentage-wise. Yeah, from, from, for the first quarter here, but it's not significant. It, it flexes up and down, but it's still, it's still 3.7 million emails coming in. I believe last, the last quarter, it was five, 5.6, if I remember right, but I could be off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that is all I have for the cybersecurity presentation. Are there any other questions that you, that the board may have for me?
Just, just a couple question or one, one quick question and comment. I think I saw an article, maybe it was last week in the Wall Street Journal, about somebody saying that AI was advancing to the ability to basically eliminate cybersecurity. I don't know if you saw the article or not, but.
I saw the article.
And, and I don't know enough about it to have any opinion. It seemed a little bit more like somebody marketing themselves than truly having a solution, but I was curious of your opinion.
So I, I did see the article, and there's, there's a lot of heated debate back and forth on that because what, what those tools do is look at potential scenarios, but they're still not catching everything. They're not catching the, the hygiene and fixing that, those pieces. And so there's a lot of works on, still in that, and those tools are extremely expensive. So there's a lot of debate right now in how, how AI is going to play a role in both the defense as well as the attacker, because the attackers are using AI and they're getting smarter. So using AI doesn't eliminate the cybersecurity field, but provides other tools to be able to investigate, and most of those tools right now are investigative.
Well, I just, I appreciate all your efforts. Unfortunately, this is one of those things where it's, at least in the current world, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We've seen that obviously with, with what happened with this, this other organization. So, you know, we all hate to spend time and money on insurance, at least I think I do, but it's one of those necessary evils, and I appreciate you doing everything. Keep us ahead of the curve.
Sure, if I may just add a comment to that, Yoon Young Kim, Chief Operating Officer. So we had the final report from our penetration test yesterday from the consultants who had come in. Basically, we paid them to come and try to break into our systems. Everything from physically into the building to looking at all of our systems and trying to gain entry into our systems and see how much.
Just like those people you see on TV, you know, the bad guy comes to work for the good guys.
You know, like, we had the little silhouette of a man instead of seeing his face. But I think one highlight, I mean, like James said, we definitely have opportunities for improvement. We were, I was quite pleased with kind of the position that we are in right now. Given where we've been in the past, we've made great progress in just the past couple of years. But I do want to share a comment from the, from the consultants who did the study is that they were, they, they cited one kind of real key difference for CalOptima Health was really the level of investment at the leadership level, at the board level, in taking this very seriously and supporting the work that we are doing. Dr. Corwin, you're right, this is, this is the preventive things that if we didn't have to spend funds on, we wouldn't want to. But the fact that we have such support from this board and the commitment of the entire team to, to, again, really be ready for the attack when it does happen was a real differentiator that they cited for us. So I do want to thank you for that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we will hear from our CFO regarding the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Basara. Nancy Hong, CFO of CalOptima Health. Continue on this quarter's Treasurer's Report. At March 24th quarter end, CalOptima's total portfolio balance was $3.3 billion. The balance was about $300 million higher than last quarter. That was primarily driven by cash received, but now yet distributed at the March quarter end from state's MCO tax program as well as the IGT programs. So we received the cash the end of March and the distribution made in April. We have $2.7 billion invested in CalOptima's operating accounts and $632 million in board designated reserve accounts. Our current board designated reserve compliance level is at 1.85 and which is in compliance with our current policy requirement between 1.4 to two times of the average monthly revenue. So based on our investment advisory firm, Merkida's report, all CalOptima's investment is in compliance with the government code 53600 as well as CalOptima's annual investment policy. in compliance with the government code 53600 as well as Caloptima's annual investment policy. So looking at the total fund balance and the performance for this quarter, the performance or the return is 1.19% for the quarter. Year to day net of the fees is 5.3%. So Makita had prepared a high level performance summary under their executive summary section of their report. That's page four to seven of the attachment of the treasurer's report. So another thing I wanted to make a note here is at May board meeting, your board had approved the changes to Caloptima's board designated reserve policy effective June of 2024. The new policy had added a separate reserve for Caloptima's tangible net equity PNE requirement. And also increased the overall compliance level from 1.4 to two to the new level, which is 2.5 to three times of monthly revenue. Staff will be working with our investment advisors as well as the investment managers to implement the change in June to meet this new policy requirements. So that concludes my treasurer's report for this quarter and I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Just one question, refresh my memory. Do those buckets of money, as I'll call them, have different investment restrictions and criteria?
So, you know, all of our investments are subject to the government codes requirement. But the Caloptima are putting those investments to two, two major bucket. One is cooperating, the other one is board designated reserve. So our internal annual investment policy sets the maximum allowable. So it's more restricted compared to the government codes. But for different bucket, we have a different maximum maturity limit for operating for fixed income accounts as well as the percentage of allocation to each type of investment allowed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Look for the questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, this brings us to public comments. Madam Clerk, are there any requests from the public to speak today?
There are no public comments today.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. So for the record, the consent calendar items are approved by one motion unless pulled by a committee member for a separate, for discussion or separate action. Today's consent calendar includes minutes from prior meetings. Are there requests to pull either of these items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. So as noted at the top of the agenda, we will now hear item seven. The Moss Adams 2024 financial audit planning, audit planning prior to the beginning of the report discussion items.
So, um, thank you, Chair Basara Nancy Hong, Chief Financial Officer of Caloptima House. As part of the hour routine annual audit, Moss over financial auditor is here today to provide your board their audit plan for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. We would like to welcome our engagement partner, our partner from Moss to provide us a overview of their, you know, audit plan this year. Thank you so much.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for your time today. We're here to talk about the audit plan. And so go to the, can I move this myself? Okay, even better. Okay. So just the agenda, we'll go through some of our required communications, some of the risks we've identified that we plan to focus on. And as well as just some of the timelines for the audit plan. So just as a reminder, we'll be performing the audit for the year ended June 30, 24. Separate from that, we do provide non-attest services. So these are services outside the audit process. These are consistent with services we've performed in the past. And so it'll include assisting management with drafting the financial statements excluding management's discussion and analysis. And then given the single audit requirements for the MSSP program, there is a filing requirement to submit the single audit to the federal, federal government. And there's a data collection form that's completed, so we'll assist management with that process as well. As far as just our responsibilities, as a reminder, you know, we're forming and expressing that opinion on the financial statements that they are in conformity with US generally accepted accounting principles. In order to design and perform that audit, we are doing that in accordance with the ASCPA audit standards. And also the government auditing standards because of the single audit requirement that's in place. And as part of that, you know, along the way, if there are any significant matters that need to be communicated to the fact, you know, we'll do that. And then anything else that may come to our attention as part of the audit process, we'll also communicate that along the way. Management has their responsibility to provide the records and still take final overall responsibility for all of the services we're providing. And then you as the fact oversee all of that. Next slide. Okay. So this is the area, you know, just in the terms of the financial statements and our understanding of the operations. You know, where are the significant risks for the audit? And these are the areas where there's a lot of estimation involved. There's a lot of having to make judgments and assumptions in calculating the amounts. So the first one will be the medical claims liability and claims expense. A component of that is the incurred but not reported estimates. And so we'll make sure we're understanding and testing the controls in the claim cycle and as well as the provider capitation cycles. We'll look at the data used by the actuary as to understand if it's complete and accurate and considering all of the available information at the time. And we'll also review the qualifications of the actuary. And then we'll also do a retrospective review. So we'll look back to the previous year's estimate to see if the actual activity subsequent to that date lines up with what the estimate was. Cause that's the way to test the methodology itself to make sure it's robust. For the other medical claims liabilities that are not within the IBNR cycle, we'll also review and audit management's inputs. I'm sure the reconciliation that Nancy was mentioning are able to be a key part of that as well. And understanding what some of those acuity adjustments were that drove having to release and then potentially records new estimates in that area. The capitation revenue and receivables, again, understanding how the membership data is reconciled, because that does change, especially with all the redeterminations still going on and that process I know is laborious. And then understanding any, what management's reserve methodology is for all of the retroactivity that happens and rate changes that happen. And then also just reviewing subsequent cash receipts details to validate the estimates at the end of the fiscal year. With amounts due to the state of California or DHCS, here again, it's all about testing management's calculations, understanding the methodology being used, whether that's consistent year over year and understanding the assumptions that were made. And then testing any of the activity to make sure we agree with what the position management is taking.
Can I ask a quick question on the prior slide? Are these the, the usual and customary risks identified for health plans? Or is this different for us this year?
No, these are the, the more significant ones that apply across health plans. So we see this with all of our other health plan clients as well. What's not on the slide and just it's helpful to hear the IT update as well. We do also spend a lot of time looking at the IT controls and understanding the security and access and change management controls around the systems. And, and change healthcare, we've been, you know, working with that, other clients have also been impacted. So we will also be taking a close look at like just all the assessments management has done and, and all of that. And understanding what the risk and exposure may be, a lot is still unknown, but you know, we'll be looking to see what, what management has done to try and mitigate some of those risks, which was kind of part of the update you heard previously. So IT, it probably should have been on this slide, but an IT becomes now a significant risk as well. Any other questions? Okay. So in terms of risks, so those, as we were just talking about, those are the risks that we typically see and identify. And, and when the way we gather and identify those risks are, you know, we are, you know, talking with management. We have a planning meeting usually before we meet with the fact to understand how the year's been going, what, what's going on, if anything that's different. We're understanding if there's any, you know, communications from regulators that may be unusual or unique that needs to be considered. And then we're also just making sure we understand, you know, what's the internal control environment like? Any changes in any of that, any changes in any of the processes that are critical to ensuring everything that is done is complete and accurate. So those are the areas we look at. So I wanted to pause here and see if any of the fact members have anything additional they would want to bring up that we should be considering.
Don't have any. Thank you.
All right. So in addition to all the other stuff we just talked about, we also do have to consider fraud in the financial statement audit. And this can be, you know, it could be manipulation of the financial statements themselves or potentially other fraudulent activities. And so the slide has really just some of the procedures that we do to address that risk and make sure we have a plan in place. You know, we, we brainstorm as a team, what a lot happens in the industry, a lot happens across client basis. And so understanding, you know, something there might have to be implemented here or tested here. We also look at a lot at the journal entries, especially any manual journal entries to the significant risk areas. And then we also just look at areas we may not have looked at in the past, or maybe it's just not been as significant. Cause if, if management's paying attention hypothetically, they can identify the pattern auditors may use. So we are required to make sure we're incorporating unpredictability to ensure that, you know, it's not just the same things we look at every year. So we, we do that as well. All right. So this is the audit timeline. So yeah, we had the planning meeting in March. We're, well, we're here today to talk about the audit plan. And then we'll be beginning interim work in the next couple of weeks. And then final field work will start towards the end of July. And then we'll kind of work into the wrap up phase and be back in September to present the audit results to the fact and issue the audits shortly thereafter. And then I think just be available at the October board meeting in case the full board has any questions. This is just a list of all of the deliverables, again, consistent with previous years. So we'll issue the opinion on the financial statements, the internal control report that's required by government auditing standards. And then the compliance on the major program for the single audit. In addition to that, we'll also have, to the extent we identify any control matters or best practices. We have a report we issued of management and then we'll have the audit results discussion and deliverable for the fact. This is just again, very consistent with previous years. It's just for transparency and visibility to the fact that this is the agreement we have with management at Caloptima Health. And, you know, definitely have a very collaborative relationship and it is a true team effort to work through the audit and get it done. And make sure they're able to keep their day job going while also working on the audit. All right. I think that is the end of our presentation. Is there any other questions?
Does the team kind of embed itself here during that field work? Are you in a nearby office? How, how did, and what's the size of the team that works on this?
We, we do a hybrid approach, so we're onsite two to three days a week. And then the rest of the time we're working from our office, which is in Irvine. And then we also try to match it with the team, like some team members also work hybrid here. So we try to match it. So we're not just sitting here when everybody else is working remotely. The size of the team is about, I think we have about seven individuals, including myself, that work on the audit.
Can, can you remind me during your field work, in addition to board members and key staff, who else do you meet with and get input from?
We do try to just talk to different individuals within the organization and that can vary. So in addition to the individuals you just listed, you know, we try to talk to others throughout the organization. They could be at various levels within various departments. Some may not even have a direct connection to the financial reporting or accounting team. And that's just our way to understand the organization and maybe get perspectives that are not just coming from the finance team or accounting team or just from management. So that helps us with some of the other risk areas we talked about and designing the audit for the fraud procedures we talked about. So we, that list varies from year to year.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to item five. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number five?
Recommend that the Board of Directors, one, approve the Caloptima Health fiscal year 2024, 25 budget as reflected in attachment A, fiscal year 2024, 25 operating budget for all lines of business and non-operating items. And two, authorize the expenditures and appropriate the funds for the items listed in attachment B administrative budget details and attachment B1, digital transformation administrative budget details, which shall be procured in accordance with Caloptima Health Policy GA dot 5002 purchasing.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Basara and the members of FAC, Nancy Hong, CFO of Caloptima Health. I will be presenting our operating budget proposal for fiscal year 24, 25. My presentation today will focus on main components of our next year's budget, covering key slides from this package. So I would like to start with consolidated budget highlights. Then go over major budget assumptions, including enrollment, revenue, medical costs as well as admin expenses. After that, I'll spend some time go over the DTS and some non-operating items. So I will start with my presentation with slide number nine. So at a consolidated level, we are proposing a $4.3 billion budget for next fiscal year. So starting from top of this table, average enrollment forecast slightly over 900,000. And our total revenue is projected to be at 4.3 billion. Medical costs around $4 billion, medical loss ratio at 94.2%. And our total admin budget is around 250 million for next fiscal year. Our admin loss ratio ARR is budgeted at 5.8%. So from our routine operation, which is the top portion of our table, we are projecting a balanced budget for next fiscal year with a small surplus less than 0.01%, $240,000. So in addition to the routine budget at Caloptima's May board meeting, your board had approved a total $526.2 million commitment to support a 30 months provider rate increase. So the estimate cost in next fiscal year is around $210.5 million. So that 210.5 million will be funded by using Caloptima's reserve. So this slide gives a really high level overview of next year's budget. So let's take a closer look at our next year's budget by different categories. So showing on this slide, we did a budget to budget comparison, looking at the next budget year versus current budget. So fiscal year 24 versus fiscal year 25. So looking at top of the table, our average monthly enrollment is at a similar level. The average is difference is less than 2,000 members. And both revenue and the medical expense, when we're looking at the fiscal year 24 versus 25, both revenue and the medical expense excluding provider rate increase has gone up about 7%. So what's the major drivers of the increase? Number one, Caloptima had implemented TRI phase one, the provider rate increase in next year's budget. So that drives both revenue and the expense up. And looking at the Caloptima's member mix and some other program changes, that's another two major drivers of why we're seeing both revenue and expense gone up about 7%. So looking at admin cost, admin budget gone up from, has gone up from 216 million to 250. The dollar wise increase of about 34 million and percentage increase is about 0.4%. So we have a detailed budget, you know, admin budget comparison in the future slide. So I'll go over those details in the future presentation.
Just a quick question on the column fiscal year 23, 24 budget. Are those numbers a combination of actuals to date and budget for the remainder of the year?
So this number is actually the budget you, your board approved at, you know, the, the previous year, the previous.
So this is not updated in any way?
This is not a actual to budget comparison, but in the, you know, later slides, we actually have analysis compared to, you know, the, the current experience versus next year's budget. Okay, thank you. So enrollment always the number one driver for both in revenue and the medical expense. So let me walk you through some of the major budget assumptions. So this chart shows Caloptima's enrollment changes for the past five years. So consolidated membership at each end of the fiscal year. So from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 23, that's beginning of a COVID. And, you know, throughout the pandemic period, Caloptima membership has grown more than thirty percent. You know, went up from seven hundred fifty thousand to almost a million members, you know, the end of fiscal year twenty three. Membership start declining, you know, in July of twenty three, after the medical redetermination activity starts. So the decrease in current fiscal year from from what we saw peaked at about nine hundred ninety thousand to what we're experiencing today, the total decrease is around eighty thousand members and about eight percent of our total membership. So that's some historical data. So looking at our fiscal year twenty five forecast, which is the last, the blue column on the right hand side, we projected the total enrollment at the end of the fiscal year, gonna end around nine hundred three thousand, which is less than one percent compared to the current fiscal year end. So the forecast had factored the net enrollment changes from, you know, continuation of the medical redetermination, we're gonna continue to lose some membership. But at the same time, the newly eligible members from the medical adult expansion, the undocumented adult joint Caloptima. So the forecast actually factored both competing factors. And the net impact is actually very small to our next year's forecast, enrollment forecast. Any questions on enrollment?
Is there any way, looking at the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty four number, so basically a hundred fifty thousand dollar bump in enrollment during that period? Do we, do we know where they came from? I mean, I know there's different, do we know quantifiable? I mean, I guess what my question is really goes to is, you know, going back a couple of years ago, we talked about doing what we could to reach members, citizens who were who were eligible, were not members. And, you know, understanding, you know, the the category of of adding certainly undocumented members and those tranches coming on and so forth. But you understand what I'm getting at. And I was like, well, my question is kind of look at a stabilized world, not that there ever is one and avoiding COVID, but it were our efforts or do we have a way of knowing of our efforts of reaching people in the county who, for whatever reason, didn't know they were eligible, didn't know about the benefits, were afraid to sign up? Have those efforts paid off? Or is it more just a subjective? Because that's that's too granular data to to call out.
So from the data, I can say, you know, the fiscal year twenty data is probably a very good benchmark or starting line. You know, looking at, because that's the time we don't have those undocumented expansion. You know, I I think the state effort started with the children, the senior, the older adults. Then finally, January of this year expanded to the twenty six to forty nine. But, you know, if we look at the seven hundred fifty thousand, that is a good benchmark. What we call is your ba- basic medical, you know, that's where your medical classic members as well as the medical expansion that's starting like a twenty fourteen fifteen through the ACA expansion, but that's your benchmark. So right now, if we are looking at nine hundred around eight hundred ninety or nine hundred, you know, the delta between those number, I see that's the effort. That's where, you know, the expansion, you know, when we're reaching out to those eligible members, regardless their immigration status, the increase are, you know, at least the majority of the increases are due to people signing up either through the transfer from the limited medical scope of medical from state to us. But with the continual efforts in member outreach, member communication, even the events, I think looking at the actual growth in the, from the base membership, that's where can be a a measure we we can monitor to see whether or not Caloptima's member outreach, you know, at first had some returns or or what's the ROI on what we're being trying to achieve.
So it is being successful?
Yeah.
And I recall in that same discussion a couple of years ago, I think, I'm probably wrong, but that maybe we thought, again, I know there's no way to be precise, but maybe there's a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand people at that time in the county who were eligible, but had not signed up for membership. Would we have any guesstimate of what that number might be today?
We think that's still a pretty accurate number based on, you know, some of the
Burnover and population growth and so forth.
Overall, I believe the the total county population has been pretty stable. And that's why that estimate a hundred to a hundred fifty, like the people outside of the system today is probably a good number at this point without knowing who they are and where they are. It's a good number what we consider the total pool or total potential members could be eligible for the medical
So full capture would be a million plus. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I think that, first of all, today's presentation is so beautifully done, so complex and really clear. This, I do think enrollment is something that we should probably be bringing back to this committee and to the board at least twice a year on these bigger questions about the medical enrollment bucket because of all the ins and outs. And so we all have questions about, well, how much Kaiser did we lose? And how many people didn't make it through redetermination? And I I know you guys look at this daily. I don't think we need to look at it that frequently, but I do think that that to prepare us for this discussion or maybe at the end of the fiscal year, the two meetings after that, at least twice a year, we could just do a little bit more of a dive into what's inside of our medical numbers year over year. Not not all the special programs, because that's pretty clear.
Thank you. Thanks for the suggestion. As a part of our FAC quarterly report, today we do include a Caloptima enrollment analysis as a part of your FAC package. It's under information item, I think, number eight or seven. So with that information, it gives you a trend analysis, look at the projection versus actual. But if you board and looking for more detailed information in terms of the redetermination or some other changes, we're more than happy to bring back to your board.
I I think that's actually what I'm referring to, because you do such a lovely job with all the specialty programs. But when we look at the big number, which is just straight medical, I think that's where we would want to know a little bit more about the 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 four factors that are impacting this year's budget. Right? Redetermination, Kaiser, new eligibility. I I'd just be interested, if we can pull that out, it'd be really good to look at.
I definitely am in support of that because there's definitely a story to be told between what happened in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, right? There's the Kaiser factor, right, the the expansion in enrollment. And it would be great for us to be able to pinpoint, one, are we successful in what we're in our outreach and engagement efforts? And what can we do different or better if not? And I think a lot of that data is muddled in into these figures. So thank you for the question and for supporting that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so moving on to next key components, which is revenue. And so when we're looking at our next year's revenue projection, we separated the the revenue projection by different lines of business. So on top of the table, we started with medical. Medical projection for calendar year twenty five, you know, because of the potential, you know, changes in the state budget as well as the acuity adjustment, staff had already factored that into the the budget. So Director Corwin, Chair Corwin, for your earlier question, you know, when staff developed this budget package, we have incorporated some of the anticipated change into the projection. So as the final result, we are looking at a very, very small modest increase in medical classic population for calendar year twenty five. And we're projecting no increase or no rate changes for Caloptima's medical expansion as well as hotel model WCM members. So overall, you know, the revenue projection is a flat, you know, projection for for next fiscal year. So moving on to One Care, our January twenty four One Care base rate went up four point three five percent. And we are projecting calendar year twenty five base rate for One Care program gonna increase another one point nine eight percent. So in terms of the risk adjuster factor, the RAF score for our One Care member, the projection shows is relatively flat at one point three five. Last lines of business, which is our PACE program. PACE program have a member who have only medical coverage as well as dual member, the member who have both medical and Medicare. So that's why the revenue split between medical and CMS revenue. So looking at the medical revenue, we're projecting a almost a three percent reduction in medical revenue PMPM. That's primarily driven the credibility and the blended rate. It is a methodology change in the state rate development process caused this, you know, negative decrease in PACE medical program about three percent. But looking at the CMS, you know, the many, many population, CMS revenue, we're looking at both base rate as well as the RAF score change. The combined impact is over seven percent for next fiscal year. So I'm gonna pause here to see if there's any questions on revenue projection.
Just one and again, I know it's an impossible question, but I'll ask it anyway. If I'm a provider, maybe Dr. Pitts might have a perspective on, if I'm a provider and I have patients who have commercial insurance and others who have Medicare insurance and other have medical. Today, where do those fall relative? So in my mind, I think if commercial insurance is probably the highest payer to a provider, let's call that ten. Where's Medicare? Is that eight? And where's medical? Is that six, seven? You understand? I'm just trying to understand order of magnitude, because I, tell me if I'm wrong, I gotta believe with some level of confidence that smaller providers don't really understand how they're getting paid.
I think that's probably accurate. I can't give you an exact number. There is turmoil in the community about payments. Commercial payments are generally the highest. Medicare comes in next, but then people also have supplemental insurance as well, which helps to
So the gap between those two is modest and a provider is not going to turn away Medicare business because there's too much volume and the gap is not material enough to turn it away. They can still make money.
And there's clearly people in the community who say they take medical, but try getting an appointment. That's a challenge. It's, it can be quite a ways out. If you want more specific information, you and I can talk later if you would know.
Just curious of the magnitude, because I know this is an ongoing, as you say, it's an ongoing challenge for providers.
It is a big challenge.
But within that context, the the gap increase that the board approved last meeting should be meaningful.
It's gonna help. It's gonna help.
Thanks.
Director Corwin, this is Nancy Hall, you know, maybe adding a little bit of information to your question. When we're looking at the provider reimbursement, usually that's what we call payer payer mix, right? Commercial always on top of the list. Using your number, if commercial is at the ten, I think Medicare is somewhere probably three to four, you know, in that bucket. And medical at this point, because of the recent rate increase, even for the TRI phase one, we're bringing in the provider reimbursement at the maximum or the minimum eighty seven eighty seven point percent of Medicare. So medical is getting very close to where Medicare reimbursement, let's say, if Medicare is at a three, medical is probably at a two point five. And for the hospital reimbursement, so the TRI phase one is more like a provider primary care. So we're giving them, you know, kind of like eighty seven point five percent as the floor. But on the hospital side, you know, in addition to hospital reimbursement, those hospitals are also receiving private PHDP, private hospital direct payment. Some of them like a UCI receive IGT funding. And on top of that, they receive QAF payment and they're also getting DISH payment. So when you're combining all those reimbursement together, which are getting from, may not directly from a Caloptima as a payer, but by providing services to medical patients. I think at this point, with all the efforts your board approved as well at the state level, trying to realign medical and Medicare, I'll say just the, you know, we're not near at the commercial level, but medical Medicare are, you know, at, you know, I'll say even we're a little bit behind, but not by too much. So the providers should getting comparable rates when they are serving medical and Medicare populations.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's that's helpful. Again, I know this is incredibly complex and that there's all these different buckets and depending upon who's providing the care and what kind of care and what the care is for and the patient and so forth, that that makes it very, very difficult. But like so many things, I believe there's a lot of misinformation out of the market, out there in the marketplace. And I don't know if, I don't know if there's something in this mix that can be reduced to a to a a layman or an average provider's understanding. To, again, this is all about education and communication, so that people understand what's going on and and to get on the same page as opposed to confusion. I don't know if it's possible, but I'll look to you guys to.
Director Corwin, if I may, Yoon Kyung Kim, Chief Operating Officer. That's some of the exercise that we undertook with Nancy and the finance team when we proposed the provider rate increases that we would like to put into, that is actually part of this budget presentation as well. Is we did take a look at areas where that gap was larger. So just, you know, kind of in layman's terms, an example would be we have some services at hospitals where the medical rate is four hundred dollars on average and the Medicare rate is four thousand dollars on average. I can't speak to the commercial rates, you know, well, but we know that the commercial rates are likely in excess of that. Those are the types of areas where we tried to close that gap. Are we gonna get to four thousand? That's probably not sustainable for us, but we did try to make sure that it wasn't so that that the gap wasn't so large. And that contributes to some of the, I would say, rather than taking that across the board approach that we have during the pandemic, where we tried to be more surgical about filling those gaps.
Thanks.
I I'd like to add that, given, given the May revise and given the detrimental proposed cuts across the board and across the state, I am sure that you all have been bombarded with questions from the different provider groups about what does this mean? What is the EPT dollars mean for us? TRIs, are they gone? Are they not? And all the other host of programs. So I I want to commend Caloptima for, for one, being ahead of that curve, anticipating what was going to probably happen, implement the TRI increases that that we did in addition to what the state already allotted for, right? So so I think there's a lot of clarity that needs to be, that needs to happen around that. But I want to commend the fact that this, in this workforce shortage that we're all experiencing in and the fact that there's a finite number of providers across the board. This really, I think, solidifies at least for us to be able to retain those providers locally. Because we're trying, everyone is trying to recruit providers from all over the the country, right? It's not just California or Southern California. People are coming from all over. And the fact that our county did what we did because of the, you know, because of our collective efforts, I think is really kudos to all of you for foreseeing that, for proposing that. Because I think it is, it's a great strength for our provider community. Now, on that note, and we know that we we are going to discuss this at some future point, we have to think about what all of this means to special categorical providers such as the FQHCs, right? So we want to have that conversation to make sure that no one is left behind in this conversation and that we are, we are providing this in an equitable fashion, the sustainability and this protection for the workforce shortage that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for the comment. If no other questions, I'm gonna move to the next key budget components, which is medical cost. So again, this, I apologize for the busy slide because we're trying to squeeze all the information on one page. So on the medical cost budget, this table includes medical cost forecast with and without that additional two hundred ten million provider rate increase your board approved. So the middle column, which is the one shaded in blue color, that's our routine medical budget. And that's before the two hundred ten million provider rate increase. And to the right, the very last, the right side, and that column is actually showing with the the provider rate increase. The reason we do wanted to provide this level of information, because in that way, your board can see the payment, which category of services are actually getting the the increases. So looking at the medical cost routine budget, total estimated medical cost around four billion dollars, one point four in provider capitation, one point five in claims payment, five hundred eighty two million. It's projected to pay for long term care. It's, um, projected to pay for long-term care and other MSSP services. And, um, moving down to prescription drug, um, the budget is a hundred thirteen million. And this is only for one care and the pace lines of business cuz the medical pharmacy already carved out. So our call lane, um, uh, in lower services now called the community support services. And our medical is budgeted at, um, two hundred ninety-two million in fiscal year twenty-five. And our medical management and some other, um, medical support services is a hun- uh, is a hundred forty million. So looking at each of the category combined together, um, our routine medical budget is four billion dollars. Again, MRR is at the ninety-four point two percent. So then moving to the very large the column, which includes the provider rate increase. That's what your board approved at the main meeting. And the focus, the primary focus is there's about hundred million goes to, uh, hospital providers. And there was other, um, ancillary, as well as the network contract changes all factored into the two hundred ten. So with that additional commitment, Call Optima will be paying providers. The total medical payment in next fiscal year is projected to be two point two, uh, four point two five billion. So counting everything in is four billion plus two hundred ten, that's about, uh, two point three. And adding everything in our actual MRR, just after we factored all the payment, it's close to ninety-nine. It's over ninety-nine percent. So that's the very last the column on this page.
Are we setting a health plan record with ninety-nine point one percent?
Um, I'll say, um, in a normal budget, we will not pay ninety-nine percent. But since about, um, you know, two hundred million will be utilized, Call Optima's unallocated a reserve. To support, um, you know, providers for the next, uh, two and a half years. So if there's no other questions, um, on slide number, um, twenty. And we actually recapped, you know, what are the categories or what are the service types? Are getting the two hundred ten point five million provider rate increases. But I wanted to just, uh, um, add a quick note here. This is in addition to the state, um, you know, required, uh, TRI phase one. Cuz the TRI phase one, lots of changes had already happened to cover primary care specialist. As well as the non-spe- non-specialty behavioral house providers. So that total changes already factored into our routine budget. And the two hundred ten, this is the additional commitment Call Optima are making to our, uh, providers.
The zero on behavioral health for health networks, I mean, can I, i- is it the obvious that no, no networks provide that service other than Kaiser?
Um, so behavioral health is a carve-out benefit. So Call Optima are managing all behavioral health services, um, incomes. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, moving on to Call Optima's admin budget. So fiscal year twenty-five admin budget, again, two hundred fifty million. And this page shows a little bit more details in terms of where the two hundred fifty million will be allocated. So from a salary, wages and the benefits, total budget hundred fifty-five million. Uh, increase from current year budget about, uh, eleven million dollars. Some of the major, uh, cost drivers are, uh, annual merit increase, decrease in, um, estimated vacancy. As well as employee benefit, uh, premium change. So that's the, um, three major drivers of the eleven million dollar increase in salary. So moving down to the non-salary line, looking at the operating cost, um, total budget eighty-four mil- million dollars. Compared to sixty-five, uh, last year, the increase is about eighteen million dollars. Um, some of the major drivers are, um, number one, looking at the purchase services line, the increase over six million dollars. That's, uh, additional cost in our claim adding to member outreach and engagement. As well as our one care and the pace marketing, um, expenses. So that's the purchase service line. Another, um, uh, big increase is under, um, operating, uh, other operating expenses. There is a nine million dollar increase in that particular line. And so we look at the, uh, project details. Uh, most of the nine million dollars will be used to support additional ITS application management. Infrastructure as well as, uh, uh, investment in cybersecurity. So that's the nine million. So looking at, uh, depreciation and indirect allocation, that's pick up another four million. So combined together, we're looking at a thirty-four million dollar increase from last year's budget. And percentage wise, it's about point four percent. So, um, um, Chair Corwin, I, um, this is another page we actually looking at the actual versus budget. So this is giving you, um, what's our current year experience, um, compared to our next year's budget. Um, looking at, um, this page on slide number twenty-three. Um, while we're looking at the, the, um, you know, if we wanna look at just the admin site. The delta between the run rate versus next year's budget is about twenty million dollar higher than budget to budget. Because that twenty million dollar is the favorable variance, you know, on the financials. So when we're, um, looking at the current year financials, we have been, uh, utilizing less than what your board approved from the original budget. So there are twenty million from the, uh, actual to, uh, current year budget variance. And on top of that, there's a thirty-four million dollar increase from the budget request. So that's the total of the fifty-four. So compare run rate, which is current ARR about four point four percent. Our request for next year is at a five point eight. Okay, so we do, um, also include, oh, let me go back. So we also include a, a, um, admin budget bridge from the current run rate to next year's budget. Give you board more details actually at, you know, each line item level to see what are the changes.
So this, when I was reading through the packet, this term bridge just confused me. This is not a, um, request. This is bridging the information for us, right?
Yes.
I, cuz I sometimes think the use of word of bridge with budget is like to fill the gap. But this is actually just the explanation of the, like the crosswalk.
It's a crosswalk.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is the fifty-four million variance when you're looking at the, from the prior.
Thank you for providing that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so, um, I actually just covered our four major components of, uh, routine budget, which is enrollment, revenue, medical costs and admin. Um, if your board don't have any questions, I would like to move to the digital transformation, uh, year three operating budget. So digital transformation, year three operating budget, the total request is twenty-seven point five million dollars. And, uh, um, this, uh, request includes seven million dollar in salary and the benefits. Um, six million in professional fees, purchase services, one point seven million dollars. And other operating expense about nine million. Depreciation and amortization about three point five million. So adding all the line items together, the, uh, this year's request is twenty-seven point five million. Um, for the digital transformation year three budget, we also include, um, all the budget details. Um, as a part of your, uh, board package attachment B one. You know, we actually list the more details by category, by service type. You know, if you, your board needs more information on, uh, digital transformation. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna, um, spend a little bit of time, take a look at this, uh, consolidated income statement. Um, this is attachment A of your board package. So at the consolidated level, um, in order to illustrate the total medical cost at the different service line. The top portion of this P and L view is actually included all the, um, planned it provider rate increase. But if you, um, you know, um, carve the provider rate increase funded by reserve out. Again, the adjusted, um, operating income will break even. The, um, net surplus is, uh, two hundred forty thousand, which is that number, um, on the right, uh, corner. And in addition to that, we listed digital transformation strategy, year three operating cost, that's twenty-seven point five million. And in addition to those two, we also have a couple non-operating items we would like to, uh, present to your board. For next year's, um, net investment income, we are projecting eighty million dollars net investment income for the whole, uh, fiscal year net of fees. And, uh, um, our five hundred building as well as the, uh, street medicine support center. We estimate the total operating cost around one point four. So combining this together, this gives you a quick overview of what our fiscal year twenty-five budget gonna look like.
Nancy, could you just spend a minute on the street medicine support center? It's our new facility in Garden Grove. I think it's under construction, right? Is it open? What, tell us what the seven sixty-two is cuz this is the income statement, not the capital budget and just.
Um, so, Director Contro, you're, uh, you're right. So we, uh, newly acquired the Garden Grove, uh, Street Medicine Support Center. Um, currently, we're still in the early stage of, um, you know, procure the, the design services as well as managing. Or getting, um, some of the general contractors services done. But in the meantime, Call Optima are spending monies to make sure, you know, we have, uh, security. We have a camera, we have some other operating, um, you know, kind of like a routine expenses. And at the same time, I think we wanted to keep the, um, insurance as well as the, uh, utilities, everything up. So this portion is really, um, uh, operating cost, what we call pre-construction. And the capital, when your board had, uh, approved, uh, a separate board action. It's, um, I, I, I believe it's September of last year, it's a total ten million dollars. But that's a capital, uh, project. I think once the construction or the project starts. Um, you know, our calling team will bring back more information, um, in terms of the progress of the project. But, um, this, uh, particular, uh, request from our operating, um, non-operating items of operating budget. Is really the miscellaneous cost associated with that building.
So once we're open and will it, it'll move up to regular operating expenses and move out of non-operating? Just like, like our pace center, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
It's just a technique or system we're using while we're under construction.
Co- correct. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, we have included more budget details by lines of business in the, uh, appendix, uh, slice of this package. Um, you know, if your board wanted to hear any more details, please let me know. Um, otherwise I'll pause here, see if there's any questions before I conclude my presentation for Call Optima's fiscal year twenty-five operating budget.
And just one, so. Assuming this moves forward, obviously it'll be heard on June sixth. The California state budget isn't finalized until June fifteenth, is that my understanding? So we simply go with best knowledge as of the sixth and best handicapping as to what the final outcome's gonna be.
Um, uh, uh, part of our, uh, budget, we have factored our best estimate based on the information available. Um, again, going back to, um, the, the comment I made, you know, in terms of a revenue, we actually factored. There's no major increase because of the budget constraint as well as, um, some of the, um, uh, TRI phase two. We did not, uh, factor it into this package. Um, I know there's probably some, um, program changes, like, uh, the acupuncture, some other changes. But, um, now the medical benefit changes is actually considered, um, significant at this time. And, uh, um, state budget kept the, um, medical eligibility. Um, that's actually supports our budget enrollment projection to be s- stable in next fiscal year. So Director Corwin, to answer your question, unless some major, um, uh, things happen, you know, at the state level. Could impact, uh, Call Optima's medical program, um, which gonna trigger some additional, uh, budget revision. At this time, based on the information we heard, where we also, um, you know, work very closely with our government affair, regulatory affair department. To make sure we got enough information to, to, um, you know, adjust our budget. But at this time, um, we don't think there's any major, um, changes. But if we do, we'll bring back, um, you know, uh, amendment or changes to your board.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, if no more questions, that's actually concludes my, um, you know, presentation for operating budget. Uh, Sharon, thank you.
No other questions?
Can I move approval?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Really such, such great work. I mean, it's like the packet is very easy to follow, even though it's remarkably complex. It was just so well done. Thanks to you and your team. Thank you.
I do wanna take the opportunity to thank my accounting and the finance team. They're the one, you know, even this just a, a quick, high-level, big numbers. But there's, um, you know, hundreds, hundreds hours behind the scene. They're putting this together.
To echo that sentiment, when I did my review with Nancy, uh, this week, I asked her, what's the difference between the budget you put together in March? And the budget you're presenting today? And she said, none, right? Because we, we already estimated what was gonna happen. We're in close communication with our, with our partners up in the state. And, um, and so again, that to me shows the, the foresight that the team has and the planning and. And, uh, the anticipation of what's coming down the pipe. I think that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. So item number six. Correct? Okay, please read the item.
Recommend the Board of Directors, one, approve the CalOptima Health fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Routine capital and digital transformation, year three capital budgets. And two, authorize the expenditures and appropriate the funds for the following items. Which shall be procured in accordance with policies approved by the Board of Directors. A, attachment A fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, routine capital budget by project. B, attachment one A fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Digital transformation, year three capital budget by project. And C, attachment A two, update to the digital transformation, year one and year two capital budgets by project.
Nancy, would you like to introduce it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Um, again, my name is Nancy Hall, Chief Financial Officer of Call Optima House. Next, I will be presenting Call Optima's capital budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So, um, we have a two, uh, capital budget package for, uh, next fiscal year. The first one is, uh, for our routine capital. So that's includes, um, information technology services, office building improvement. And our second package is gonna be for our digital transformation strategy. And that's including year three, the new capital, uh, project request. As well as a update for DTS year one and the year two. So starting with, um, Call Optima's routine capital budget. So for next year, our routine capital budget request is, um, eight point three million dollars. That's including ITS project about one point two million dollar. And building and the office related capital in, um, building and office improvement capital request about seven million. So looking at the combined ITS and the building, that's total eight point three million dollars for next year. Um, this page gives you a little bit of details in terms of, um, where we're gonna spend our money for the ITS related project. One point two, um, goes to infrastructure. Um, and another, uh, twenty-five thousand goes to application management. So that represents about fifteen percent of our total routine capital budget. So looking at our, um, building and the office improvements. So, um, building and the office improvements, including our five oh five building, five hundred building, which we're currently working on, and our pace center. So this report does not include the Garden Grove, um, recovery center. Because that was approved by your board at a separate action. So looking at the total combined, uh, office building and the pace center, total request is seven million dollars. So that's represents about the eighty-five percent of the routine capital. So moving on to this year's DTS budget. Um, looking at the DTS budget for year three. Um, this year's budget includes additional capital request of seven point five million dollars. Major categories are including network, um, operations center monitoring and the control system. Cloud, um, migration for financial system, enterprise data and the system integration. And the member provider portal upgrade. So looking at all the project combined together, this is a seven point five million dollar project. We would like to seek your board approval. So, um, this is also part of your, um, board, um, material attachment A one. So each of the project has been listed with the total, uh, estimated dollar amount. Um, during this year's budget review, um, staff have actually went back to the beginning of the digital, um, you know, uh, digital transformation strategy. So, uh, digital transformation strategy, the hundred million dollar board commitment started the fiscal year twenty-three. So that's year one fiscal year twenty-four, the current year is, um, year. So that's year one fiscal year twenty four, the current year is um year two, and the fiscal year twenty five, which is the year three. So we would like to take the opportunity, actually present you a refreshed view of what happened in the digital transformation DTS year one and year two. So originally, your board approved um fiscal year twenty three capital budget thirty uh thirty four point six million dollars. Year two, twenty one point four. Total board approved um amount is fifty six million dollars, which is the first row on this table. So when when staff um review during this budget process, staff have reviewed status of each of those approved project, you know, from the DTS project list and refreshed the DTS um, you know, cost or updated the cost, you know, for both of the uh year one and the year two. So after review, we would like to present your board a updated number for fiscal uh for fiscal year twenty three, which is year one. A dollar adjusted from thirty four point six million to fourteen point three. Year two, twenty one point four million to about nine point uh seven million dollars. So looking at the delta between the original approved number versus the refreshed number, we are putting thirty two million dollar outspent, you know, capital dollars back to the total DTS restricted reserve, back to the pool. Okay, so um this is another um summary to recap what happened, you know, with that uh total digital transformation, you know, commitment. Um your board approved um two and a half years ago. Um a quick recap really on including both um capital expenditures as well as the operating expense. So for year one, the total combining uh capital and operating total cost is twenty two point seven million dollars. Year two, that's the current fiscal year, we we um annualized, we estimated based on the uh actual expenditures as of March. So the estimated total cost about thirty two point five million. And the year three, that's actually the budget um proposal uh I just presented. You know, the capital budget, seven point five million, and the the operating budget, which is the um uh digital transformation year three, twenty seven point five. So combine those three years together. Um we have already allocated ninety million out of the hundred million dollar pool to support this true transformation strategy. And after year three, the remaining balance is estimated to be around ten million dollars. So we wanted to um use the budget presentation as an opportunity to share with you a a quick summary of the allocation.
Nancy, if I may, this is Jung Young Kim, Chief Operating Officer. Um at the June board meeting, I'll be presenting just a project summary in terms of the achievements and then the plans for the digital transformation project. You've seen some of the reallocation of the funds and the and I I would I would just like to share that the majority of those are postponements of those projects. As we have found that in year one, we had planned to do certain things, that we found that we had to do certain things first. And so the deliverables uh are are largely intact in terms of the initial vision. And the timing of them has just been um moved a little bit. But again, I'll provide a full summary of the deliverables and then the plan for year three in terms of the actual delivery of products at the June meeting.
That's great. That's all be good.
So I thought I understood this, but maybe now I'm confused. So looking at the slide you have up. No, actually, the 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 one that was there before. So this should, this shows uh, the prior slide slow shows a return of thirty two million that wasn't spent, right? But was that just capital?
So um the thirty two million.
I guess what I'm struggling with is, which I thought I figured out, but now I've lost myself again, between the the capital and the and the operating pieces here.
This slide right here is only capital.
Good.
Cause if we don't return the thirty two million dollar from a capital, we will be running out of money for year three. Because um if you look at the the operating cost, we spent um a million dollar in uh year one, twenty two million dollar in year two, that's thirty million. But your board already approved the fifty six million dollar. If I don't return that money, we will have nothing uh available for year three.
No, I get that. So does the operating budget show up in the big operating budget? Or is this segregated out, just like we were talking about the Garden Grove Street Medicine Program?
Um the operating budget, we have a separate DTS tracking sheet. So that's a separate bu- uh package as a part of your operating budget. So we have a um, if you look at the way how Callotima presents the operating budget, the DTS twenty seven point five million is sitting on a separate uh package, separate report. Um.
It's in the budget we just approved.
Budget you just approved.
That's the distinction I was making, and it's in that budget versus using the example of Garden Grove Support Center is not. And why, what uh what determines which bucket it's sitting in? In other words, I'm 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 almost understanding that the, what I'll call the CalAim type and that project has its own separate budget standalone from what I'll call the big operating budget. But in this case, that's not true. Is that what I understand?
So um, you know, we actually had a discussion internally with uh Y K as well as our internal accounting team. You know, consider what include in this package or not. I think for the Garden Grove, um you know, support center.
When I, and I'm just using that as an example, just to.
But uh the goal is um for our operating and the capital, we always wanted to have a package give you a comprehensive view over everything, either supported by Callotima's um regular capitation revenue, you know, the routine um operation and admin. But also, we are listing the the projects like a like a DTS because it's it's impact our operating departments. You know, it's actually part of our F T E, it's part of our total cost. But the the funding for the the separate operating budget is to support that DTS. So going back to why some of those um, you know, board initiatives were not budgeted, that some of them are actually outside of the normal operation. You know, for example, the Garden Grove Center right now is still in a very early stage of the development. Once that put into operation, um if there um things, activities happening within the current year, we may bring a uh separate attachment. It's more like an amendment to the budget to your board, give you a overview of what's the original approved budget, what's the new request. If there's either um additional request, we would like to bring uh forward for approval or even um, you know, showing you what are the balance left. But at this point, that that proposal is still too premature. And that ten million dollar really was sitting there as a initial like allocation or appropriation for the funds.
Simpler way to to ask my question is, I'm looking at the slide up here, at the total column. And basically, again, in my simple way of looking at things that that uh for every three dollars, one is allocated to capital and two is allocated to to operating. Has that materially changed from what was started? Or is it purely just the timing function?
Um it is um, it is a timing function as well as uh frankly, we're we're buying less stuff. And we're operating it internally. Um the other reason I would say that is, and we wanted to bring the visibility of this budget, of the DTS budget as part of the regular budget is also, is as DTS winds down, we will start seeing this folding into operations. They will either replace operations or they will augment operations. And so you'll continue to see some of these costs, uh the capital less so as part of this budget. But some of this operating will continue long term for us.
That's correct. Is, another way of thinking about this is uh DTS is kind of below the line. We're we're trying to look at capitation revenue and patient centered revenue and net operating income to drive M L R. And then we have to look at these other projects that are not care delivery that are affecting our administrative costs, but not as it relates to the care and A L R, M L R ratio that we're held accountable to in a regulatory environment. So I I I just think about it as these projects are operational, but they're below the line so that we can keep track of what is it costing us to care for members? Would would that be, is that how you guys might describe it? I, cause I could be mistaken with my understanding. I just, that's the way I look at the financial statement.
Uh Dr. Crinchara, you're absolutely right. Again, one of the reasons why we bring the DTS budget forward more is because, again, there is a direct impact to our operations. Right now, we're we're paying for it out of a separate pocket. Um but in the very near future, it will all be, it it will have to come into a single pocket.
It's a hybrid, basically.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, I understand, I appreciate your 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 comment, Blair, I I I get that. Again, I'm just trying to, trying to compare them to the other buckets. Yeah, I I I see that this is slowly, you know, it's kind of like merging onto the freeway, if you will.
Yeah.
A- and uh like Y K mentioned, once we are um, you know, approaching the end of the digital transformation strategy, the project gonna continue, cause all the software we're purchasing, all the improvement we made to the infrastructure, that will stay with Callotima in the long run. So I think the goal is to use the uh hundred million dollar commitment to build the infrastructure to a to in um, you know, really reach a better um efficiency productivity. So in the future, really uh to equip Callotima for any future challenges, you know, like a uh cybersecurity, um you know, the system upgrade, even in terms of a member and the provider experience or you know, the the member portal, a lot of things, I think there are gonna be returns beyond just um, you know, financials.
And and just one more question, and I know Y K's gonna speak to this in in greater detail in a in a couple of weeks. But the, of the operating budget there, um I assume a lot of that is F T Es. And will those F T Es go away when the on-ramp is finished? Or do they just become integrated because there's a a a need for those ongoing services?
You're correct, a lot of those are F T Es. Um some of those are positions that we did not have before that we needed to have, and they will continue. Um some of them will be project specific. We are trying to limit the amount of kind of short term that we use. Um and also, some of those will be offsets against, again, maybe functions that we may not need long term. Um not necessarily maybe just in the I T S function, but elsewhere in the organization as well.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, so um that's actually concludes my uh capital budget presentation. Um I'm happy to take any additional questions uh before your board will down the side. Thank you.
Just to weigh in on the DTS budget, I I also see it as a catalytic investment, right? In the efficiency of running the organization, both internally, for all the reasons, you know, James just stated and you all just stated, but also outward facing, right? So providers need to get paid faster, get get better information, cleaner information. And and so it is expected that at some point, the sustainability of that is going to be ongoing, but maybe not to the level that we started with. So thank you for that clarity, I think we needed to talk that through.
Thank you.
So we're ready for motion?
Move approval of this item?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're moving on to the information items. I believe that the staff has done a thorough job on the remaining information items. So unless anyone has any questions, I recommend that we accept items eight through twelve as presented.
May I just make a comment?
Sure.
I just think it's absolutely incredible that you were able to get the business insurance renewal down by almost seven percent. That, I mean, insurance is just really a tough market. So either you're very shrewd, or we had a really great partner helping us, or I don't know what, but it's just remarkable.
I I I actually do wanna to take the opportunity, thank my um, I don't think my um, you know, financial compliance director is here. Um her team actually worked really hard on the insurance renewal. So we got a pretty major uh reduction in our workers' comp insurance. But I also wanted to say, even from a cyber insurance, um we actually increased our cyber coverage from twenty million to thirty. And the the increase in premium is only seventy nine thousand dollars. So overall, it is a um very successful renewal year. And um I do wanted to um thanks my staff and also the 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 broker we're working with to get to the point where today. So we're gonna continue um, you know, work on the workers uh workers' comp, the experience rates. But at the same time, looking at the other coverages to make sure we have enough protection, you know, for Callotima.
You're gonna also need to keep this just like as a little pocket or little sucker or something, lollipop in the back, because next year it could double. And you'll be able to remind us, oh, but last year we got this big savings. So it's a, it was, it's a lot of money that we saved.
Yeah.
And I have to. It's not, I know it's not guaranteed year over year, so that's really good.
Yeah, but for cyber, we're getting luck, uh we're we're lucky this year, cause we started the renewal process earlier. The uh change house care hits the market late March, and our renewal um actually happened right before that. So we'd be able to secure the favorable rates before that uh happened. So definitely next year, we may see something different. But I will remind um your board, um you know, there is a reduction in uh the current year. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, are there any other committee member comments?
Oh, sorry, do we have to approve informational items? I I got in the way there.
We we did, and it was, we all said, motion did pass, correct?
Yes.
Okay, this brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. Any additional comments?
Yeah, thank Nancy and her staff. It's always well done. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Well, I'll too wanna thank Michael and Nancy and the rest of the team for all the work that went into preparing the the fiscal year twenty four twenty five budgets. Our next uh finance and audit committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for September nineteenth, pending board approval at the June board meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.